Good evening, everyone. This is the special meeting for the consideration of the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts. Mr. Grant, will you please take roll call?
Ms. Gentile?
Here, but at 5:30 I'm excused. I have another commitment this evening, so when I get up and leave, please, it's not because of any other reason.
Mr. Des Noiers?
Here.
Ms. Jordan?
Ms. Jordan is running a few minutes behind.
Dr. Rucci? Dr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Ms. Currie?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Mitchell?
Here. I'm now going to turn our meeting over to our special counsel, Mr. Fitzgerald.
My name is Mark Fitzgerald, and I'm with the law firm Fox Rothschild. We are solicitor for the Upper Darby School District. This is a charter school hearing consistent with the Pennsylvania Charter School Law of 1997 to consider the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts charter application. Under Section 1717A of the Charter School Law, the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors is required to hold at least one public hearing on the provisions of the charter application within 45 days of receipt of the school's application. By my count, we received on the deadline of November 15th a charter school application for the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts. This evening, the first such hearing to consider the application of the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts will occur, wherein the charter school applicant will be allowed to make a public presentation regarding the application. In addition, public comment will be taken at this meeting as well as at a subsequent meeting scheduled on January 31st, 2019 regarding the application. Public comment will be limited to individuals who are residents of the Upper Darby School District. Under the law, a school district can consider the application under a number of standards, including whether there is sustainable support for the charter within the community, whether the charter school can provide comprehensive learning experiences to the students of the district, whether the application meets the requirements of the law, and whether the charter school may serve as a model for other public schools. Before we begin the public presentation of the application, I would like to advise the public that this hearing is being recorded by a stenographer and is also being recorded by other means for purposes of creating a record necessary for the process of reviewing the proposed application. For the record, I would like to ask the applicant some procedural questions for this hearing. Ma'am, can you please state your name and spell your last name for the record?
Carolyn C. Collins. Last name is spelled C-O-L-L-I-N-S.
And what role do you or will you play with the specific application for this charter?
Right now, I'm playing the role of organizing the board. Oh, well, okay.
Can you clarify what that means? In other words, did you prepare this application, or did you have no role in preparing this application?
No.
Okay. So you will not be speaking to the merits of the application this evening?
Correct.
Who will be speaking for the merits of the application?
Mr. Harold Kurtz. K-U-R-T-Z.
And is he present this evening?
If he didn't just walk in the door, he is on the way. As I told you earlier, he called saying he was stuck out there in traffic.
For the record, Ms. Collins notified me just prior to the start of the hearing that the consultant who will be presenting with her this evening has yet to arrive. Certainly, if he is within a few minutes of arriving, we may have to go off the record momentarily to allow for his arrival. Did you receive notice of the hearing this evening?
I don't recall receiving notice. Not an official notice from you. I saw it on your board, on your website, and I heard it from a reporter.
Well, let me share with you a letter that was sent to your attention. And maybe we can clarify what addresses we have for you for subsequent communications.
Okay.
This is a letter sent on November 30th, 2018, to your attention with the address of 4 Rockburn Road, Clifton Heights, 19018. Is that, and that is the address noted on the application, is that not a correct address?
That's not a correct address for me personally on the application. You'll see I have my home address, which was 1001 Sunset Street, but that is the address that we propose to have the school.
So 1001 Sunset would be for mailing purposes?
Correct.
All right. And what, yeah, what?
Trainer.
Trainer.
Mm-hmm. 19061.
Similarly, we had sent an email to a Mr. Duffy, D-U-F-F-Y, with a copy to, two email addresses that we have for you, Ms. Collins. We have a CCollins@udcsa.com and a CarolynCollins625@gmail.com. Are those your?
That's me.
Okay. I think there was some confusion as to who specifically is either A) the founder of, and would you, are you the founder of the charter?
I am not.
Okay, so who?
It hasn't been founded yet. That's why we're here.
Typically, however, when applications do come forward, there is a founder who would be bringing forward the application as the individual who's championing the establishment of a charter. So that, you're saying that is not you?
Correct.
And that person has not been found yet?
Correct.
Is it the position of, and I'm going to ask you, speaking on behalf of the charter for this evening, that A) you have standing to advocate for the charter, or maybe B) that this is a ripe application at this time?
Well, I don't know what you mean when you say ripe.
That it's premature, that we don't have individuals that are actually here to
Well, um...
to advocate for the charter they're seeking to establish?
Yeah. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Correct.
Okay. You'll notice in there, we use the word "proposed charter," "proposed board members" because we were advised that nothing is solid or set in stone until we come before you and you give that permission. Not you personally, of course.
Understood. At this time, I would like for the record, and we have Ms. Collins noted for the record, first of all, has the gentleman that, Mr. Kurtz, has he arrived?
I don't see him.
Okay. All right, well, we can continue with some of the initial procedural issues, and hopefully he arrives in due time. I would ask for the record at this point to have the Board of School Directors identify themselves by stating their name and spelling their last name for purposes of our record this evening. So I'll look to Ms. Mitchell, who's the Board President, to begin that process.
Rachel, R-A-C-H-E-L, Mitchell, M-I-T-C-H-E-L-L, President of the School Board. Mr. Des Noiers, could you go next? And we'll go down the line.
Neal, N-E-I-L, Des Noiers, D-E-S-N-O-Y-E-R-S, School Director.
Judy Gentile, J-U-D-Y, G-E-N-T-I-L-E, School Director.
Ed Marshalek, M-A-R-S-H-A-L-E-C-K, Acting Assistant Superintendent.
Edward Brown, E-D-W-A-R-D, B-R-O-W-N, Vice President of the Board.
Gina Currie, G-I-N-A, C-U-R-R-Y, School Board Director.
Donald Fields, D-O-N-A-L-D, F-I-E-L-D-S, School Board Director.
Monica Taylor, M-O-N-I-C-A, T-A-Y-L-O-R, School Board Director.
Just noting for the record, Mr. Marshalek, who introduced himself as the Assistant Superintendent, is not a member of the Board. He's a member of the administration. Two individuals have, and for the record, we were, we had paused for approximately 10 minutes while the consultants to the application were able to arrive. They were running a bit late. And to that end, I would ask that the two individuals that are now seated at the table with Ms. Collins identify themselves by stating their name and spelling their last name for the record and their position with regard to this charter application.
First of all, I want to apologize. I'm really sorry about the lateness. It's inexcusable. My name is Dr. Harold Kurtz. I am the consultant who is primarily responsible for the design and writing of the application.
My name is Dr. Janice Solkov, S-O-L-K-O-V, and I'm also involved as a consultant for the application.
My last name is spelled K-U-R-T-Z.
Good evening. My name's Thomas Taylor III, and I'm a business manager for approximately 18 charter schools in the state of Pennsylvania.
Ms. Solkov and Mr. Kurtz, notices were provided to Ms. Collins, and just so you are aware, because presumably you would be a part of any subsequent hearings regarding the charter, January 31st is the next scheduled date with regard to what I would describe as substantive questions as relates to a number of the areas that municipalities review in terms of charter applications. So making sure you have that noted for your calendar purposes. I just want to note that it would appear that at times within the application, it references Ben Salem Township, which I do not believe is in
I have no idea where.
is in Upper Darby. I just was wondering, was this an application for also a charter done in Ben Salem?
No. And I have no idea where that is or where it was located, but that's obviously an error. This application was prepared solely for submission to the Upper Darby School District, and the design was based on the desire of the founding committee.
Okay. Maybe during your general presentation of the application, you can discuss in some detail the governance, proposed governance structure, or who this committee is for a better understanding on the Board's end. And as was mentioned at the beginning of this hearing, following your presentation will be the opportunity for public comment. We are limiting it to residents of the district. And I don't know, Ms. Mitchell, is there a limitation on the amount of comment time per individual?
Typically, our public comments are three minutes, and I'll, I did not have a sign in sheet tonight because of the early start time. I wanted anyone who came in that needed, that wanted to speak.
That's fair.
So it will be limited to three minutes.
Okay, very fine. So with that, we would ask you guys to present on your application that we all have a copy of this evening. Go ahead.
Basically, and I'll talk a little bit about the founding committee. Basically, it's the concept and vision of the members of this committee that they felt that there would, there is a need in the Upper Darby community for a charter school that would emphasize and be built around the concept of the arts. When we talk about the arts, we're talking about the visual arts. We're talking about music, vocal, instrumental. We're talking about theater. We're talking about dance. The program they want to present kind of models in some way some of the very successful charter schools that are in existence now in the Commonwealth. The Philadelphia School for the Arts, in which I was the primary consultant after they got their charter and worked with their opening. The Chester School for the Arts, I wrote that application, and they're probably a premier charter school in the state. There's a middle school for the arts in Lehigh Valley, another application that we successfully submitted. The concept works, and it works well because so many of our young people have a lot of talents that they just don't normally get the opportunity to explore in a regular school setting. Unfortunately, with the things that happen around the state with funding and so forth and the formulas, schools districts make decisions in terms of how they want to operate their schools. And unfortunately, one of the first things that gets cut very often are the arts, and that's tragic. It truly is. As a parent of four young people who went to school for the arts, I understood the impact. And as a superintendent, and I was superintendent for 17 years in South Jersey, it always seemed that there was always an attempt to push the arts a little bit to the side because there were other priorities, and it was always a mistake. And I was very successful in fighting that back because it's my belief, totally within my soul, that the arts are our way to reach our children like none other. Because the literature is clear, and the research is clear, that young people who get involved in the arts and who are doing a lot of the activities, such as the instrumental and theater, are students who generally exceed in all their other studies. And these are the young people who add to our lives and to our community a certain level of beauty and enjoyment that can't normally be found. So based on that concept, the founding committee really felt that there is a need to offer that to the, to the children in the Upper Darby community. We recognize that the Upper Darby High School has been a bastion of the arts for many, many years, a very successful operation in all levels of the arts. We also recognize, number of years ago, there was a drawback in the arts because of financial considerations, and a lot of the services that were provided began to shrink. And we also recognize at that time, there was a general outcry from the community demanding that the arts be reinstated, and some were, but not all. But more importantly, the concept of our school is our students will have arts every day, not one day a week in an art class, or one day a week in a choral singing group, but they'll have arts every day, five days a week, and in the afternoons with all the extended activities. So there, a lot of what they will do will center around their growth, not just academically, but within the artistic talents that they will discover. The school in that concept will still be open to all children. As required by charter law, it will be open to all kids. There won't be auditions to determine whether they get into school or not, whether they can dance or not, because it'll be our pleasure to teach them. And they don't have to be the best dancers, but they can still put on a tutu, and they can still dance, or do some of the other dancing regimens that will be presented to them. With that concept in mind, we also looked at how do we make this really work for the students here? We looked at class size in the community, and we outlined in our application the fact that in 2017, there was a study done by, internally in the district, that determined that class size wasn't an issue you wanted to address, and when you addressed it, you determined that you wanted to recommend that by 2021 that you would be able to reduce class size, and it's more of a goal than a guarantee, to 23 to 25 in the elementary grades and 25 to 27 in the middle school. Our class size will be 20 students to a class from day one, and it will remain 20 students in a class. That's K through 8. Now, when we open it, we'll be at K through 5, and that's why we're starting with 360 kids. We're capping our enrollment for the Upper Darby District at 500 and 520, or 540, I apologize. There will be three grades, three classes per grade, K through 8. We know that when the kids complete their experience, that they will be able to go to the high school fully prepared academically and also ready to become a significant part of the existing programs in the arts that existed, that exist today in the high school. So we think we looked at that, and we thought that that would be a way of being able to maximize what we do with the students. At the same time, we believe that having a full-day kindergarten is real critical to our children, and although that same study does reference the desire to open full-day kindergarten in 2021, that too is not enacted. We would start that from day one, full-day kindergarten, 20 kids to a grade. So we think that makes a significant difference for the students. We also looked at what was going on in the district in terms of how are you faring in terms of your test scores and all the other good stuff that, as a superintendent, turned my hair from brown to gray. And I know that's something that the school administration grapples with consistently, how do we make sure our students, our schools meet the state's standards? How do we measure the fact that our kids are growing academically and that they're being able to fulfill all the expectations as outlined by the state? And I looked at the school performance profiles, and what I did is I looked at the scores that the school had, that the district had reported to the state and as a result of all their submissions, and the scores that the state put out on your school performance profiles. For those who don't know what that is, that each school is given a rating based on their academics, based on their attendance, based on all kinds of significant issues that all add up to a score. We love our scores and we love our numbers, but they came to a score, and the state established 70 as the scorer expected.
Can you clarify which year you're referencing?
I started with 2013, because I was able to get that information, and then I did it for 2017, four years later, last year. And I basically compared the 20, and it's in there, and I have the chart in the application on page 57. And in that comparison chart, it showed from 2013, 2014 school year to the year reported from 2017, 2018, the last set of scores, that there's, the first year, you had two middle schools reported and 10 elementary schools report. And a couple of the schools did achieve the 70, and a few of them were in the mid-60s. Unfortunately, it shows that four years later, that none of the schools were in the 70, that every school dropped. Every school dropped, some pretty significantly, some as low as in the, one in the 40s and one was in the 50s. And it kind of suggested that something's going on, and if I were a parent, I'd probably be concerned, and I'd want to know, what are we going to do about trying to make a difference? Obviously, we believe class size makes a difference. We believe starting kindergarten early makes a difference. And I believe, and I truly believe this, because I've been where your superintendent sits, I truly believe that he and his team are probably doing everything they can to try to address the many academic needs of a changing community.
Just to get clarification, do you have specific, either training or background with how those scores are compiled and how the state develops those scores?
Well, yeah, they're there. They're published every year by the state, and they're sent to all the superintendents to share with, and a score comes out for each school.
Sure, but I mean, there's a bit more that does go into how those scores are developed and then understanding with how growth modeling occurs and how scores can be influenced by that. Was any of that, do you have any of that working background in terms of this?
No, I don't design those things, and I don't interpret them. I just read them. I do with them what your administration team does with them. When they turn them over to their principal, and they say, you know, your school dropped three points this year. Look at the areas they dropped. They dropped in math, and they dropped in reading. What are we going to do to do a corrective action plan? And that's what administrators use those things for. You don't have to be the designer to understand that, but you do have to be able to read and interpret them, and I'm interpreting them for you. I'm doing nothing different than what any school administrator would do, what any parent would do when you report these out to the parents, and they say, how come our school dropped? Because my kid did great this year. Or, my kid didn't do that good, but that's his fault. I don't know whose fault it is. I only want to point fingers, but the fact is, when a school starts to slide a little bit academically, it means that the school does have an obligation, and I'm not casting any expressions that they're not, but they need to look at and come up with corrective action plans for those areas of weakness, so that the next time that students are tested and their scores are compiled for the school performance profile, that they see that they've shown some growth. And that's what the state looks for, and that's what any Board of Education looks for, because that's what it's all about. And I lived that for 17 years as superintendent, so I know what that's all about. And I sat in an elementary school in Philadelphia for 12 years. I know what that's about. So I'm telling you that we got a problem, and this is what our parents feel, that they want to have addressed. They know by law that they should have some options. Upper Darby does not provide any charter school options. If a parent wants to have their child go to a different school, they have to pay for it by sending them to a parochial private, or they can take them out for a cyber school, and that becomes mostly cybers, but they can't take them out for cyber.
Is it your testimony that there aren't charter school options in this?
There are none in this community, other than the fact that you have a number of students that go to charter schools outside of Upper Darby. There are no schools in Upper Darby that they can go to.
But just to clarify, you're not suggesting that charter school options are not available to the students?
Not provided. They're not provided by this district for the children in this district. There are charter schools that will accept applications from students in Upper Darby, and I believe you have a large number of students who go into Chester for school there. But the point is that they can send these kids to other schools.
Let me just clarify, for members of the public, and I do appreciate your interest in this evening, to the extent that something is said that you desire to make comment on after the presentation's over, I certainly welcome it. I would ask, though, that there not be any specifically calling out during this presentation. Mr. Kurtz, you can continue.
All right. And a review of your budget shows that you have money being spent for charter schools, but that means you're paying tuition for students who are going to charter schools not in the Upper Darby District. And the fact is, districts should be willing to look at that option as a viable one for their children. The children belong to the community, not to the school district. They belong to the total community, and that's why the charter option was developed, so that parents would have that choice of sending their kids to a school in the community providing the kind of educational options that they want. The charter school for the arts that we put together is one that meets that criteria. And at this point, to talk a little bit about the Board, Dr. Carolyn Collins is the President of the founding committee, and there's a significant number of people in that committee, all of whom live in this community, and I'll have her talk briefly about them.
As Mr. Kurtz said, that I am the President of the founding committee, and as I previously stated, we are not sworn in as a board because you have not said that this could go forward yet. And so, those people that have submitted their resumes, and we've started our own vetting process, I would say, as well as continuing to look for others from the community that have the credentials that are needed to make decisions for the students that would be coming to the school, they would be a part of the hiring process, for people that we've thought would bring the skill sets that our children need for them to excel.
There's a reference to a committee, or a founding committee, and we certainly acknowledge the fact that this is not a board for purposes of doing business at this point for the charter. But is there, in fact, a committee of individuals?
Yes.
Okay. And is that listed in the application?
Yes.
Okay. So who are these individuals?
One is, let me, thank you, Alexander Hall, and I believe he is present. He is, he owns a business in the district. Is Alex- Is Alexander here? He also runs a dance school. I was going to ask him to stand if he was still, I saw him in the hallway.
And I only say, because it's a fairly difficult document to circumnavigate because there are references to page numbers, but then there aren't page numbers. So if you could point us to where we should be looking in that regard.
This is on page 59.
May I just, I had, I just wanted to go on record and I had given it over to Mr. Marshallak. One of the founding members by the name of April Rice sent the board an email correspondence stating, okay.
Yeah, and I guess I can make that for the record now. The board of school directors did receive a communication from an April Rice dated December 4th, 2018, which I will read now and then we can certainly add it as an exhibit. For purposes of this, we'll make this exhibit one. And it reads as follows, "I've been notified that my name was listed on the application for the Upper Darby School for the Arts. My name is April Rice and I live in Drexel Hill. I was told about the school possibility about a month ago. I had absolutely no, and she emphasized no knowledge, that my name was placed on the application nor gave any permission to list my name. I did express to the founder back in October that I was not able to partake in the process for various reasons. I have never attended any of the information sessions, visited the site, planning sessions, or even discussed my role at the school with anyone. I wanted it on the record with the Upper Darby School Board that I am not a proposed board member and should also not have been listed in the posted application as a founding member of the founding coalition team. Furthermore, I did not give permission for my name to be used or my resume to be published on the application submitted. I do not have any children that would benefit from K-38 grades. I have nothing vested in this proposal and would like to be removed from any and all correspondences in reference to this school application." So that'll be noted as exhibit one. But if we could clarify the commitment of committee members with that understanding, that certainly gave some pause to the board as relates to it.
In fact, I'd like to add, it just gave pause to me also, because I got the resume because she sent it for that purpose. Now, I'll call the names, those that are here, I hope that they're still here, or those that have sent their resumes and been to the meetings and said that they wanted to work to bring this level of excellence to the district. Alexander Hall, and he is the owner of the dance school in Clifton Heights. Justina Markowski, she lives on Copley Road. She's a customer service rep, but she is also a community advocate for our children. Dhana Nicholas, who lives in Drexel Hill, as well as her husband, who I don't see him on here. But both of them submitted their resumes. They work in the health field. And Brianna Phillips also is a special ed teacher and a clinician who lives in Drexel Hill. Elliot Robinson, the husband of Brianna, he's more into technology. He teaches students how to work on computers, not just typing, but the technical part of it. Catherine Spicer, she is a young lady that just stepped out to pick up her children, but she's also from Upper Darby. Dr. John Taylor is a special education teacher at a charter school currently in Philadelphia, but he's a resident of, also a resident of Upper Darby. And then, I'm just speaking of those that are here. We do have two others that have not, that were not on this paperwork that we're also reviewing that are here.
And just for the record, that list is on page 66 as the table of contents indicates. And the other list discussing the board was on page 59 as the table of contents indicated. We are still continuing to have people come forth from the community who have heard about our effort and who have contacted Dr. Collins and have expressed an interest to join the founding committee. And we're getting their resumes and they will be invited to meetings going forward. We were not aware of any letter from Ms. Rice and she did send us the resume and said at the time she wanted to be a member of the committee. She chose not to come to the meetings with excuses that she couldn't come. We did not know that she decided to withdraw. We were sorry that she did. We thought she could make a contribution. We never received notification from her that the letter was sent to the board on the 4th. But that's the kind of stuff that can happen.
For clarification, so the transcript notes this, you had listed the names of the individuals. Are any of the individuals in the audience this evening?
Yes.
They will speak at the point of the.
Do you want them to stand up?
No, I mean, if they're going to speak during public comment, then that will be noted.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Dr. Collins? If not, I'll ask Dr. Solkov to make a brief comment about the curriculum.
That's fine.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Jan Solkov. I've had over 35 years of experience in education in Pennsylvania with six certificates from the Pennsylvania Department of Education, including careers as a teacher, principal, central office administrator, undergraduate and graduate school instructor, school board member, co-founder of a dual-language charter school, and education consultant. My responsibility in this charter school application involved identifying and providing a quality curriculum for the school. I'd like to begin by giving some background about curriculum development. A curriculum consists of a guide for educators to teach content and skills, a general guideline of what you wish to teach throughout the school year. Some curricula are general roadmaps while others are quite detailed and give instructions for day-to-day learning. Developing a curriculum can be quite challenging. It involves several component phases listed here as, define the purpose of the curriculum, create timelines, state desired outcomes, consult existing curricula for inspiration, write goals for each unit, create essential questions, design appropriate learning experiences, plan for assessments, teach the lesson, and make revisions. Who creates the curriculum? A professional association of supervision and curriculum development explains that curriculum study and writing is a continuous improvement process and subject area curriculum teams will drive development for a district. In other words, and this is important, it is an ongoing, evolving process that has a starting point but continues to develop and grow with the input of the professional educators who utilize it in an ongoing process of regular review and revision. Now, I'd like to talk about our arts program, which is one of the major features that makes our school unique and will produce highly accomplished students. The arts program will focus on music, dance, theater, and the visual arts. Students will sing, dance, act, or create art on a daily basis. These experiences will reinforce the essential notion that every student is worthwhile and worthy of applause, showing the rest of the world that the children of Upper Darby are capable of the highest achievement. The children's most important rewards will be the confidence and personal development that happens when they devote themselves to exploring and mastering a fine art. Furthermore, the tangible benefits of an arts education are clearly defined by the President's Committee on Arts and Humanities, which is an advisory committee to the White House on Cultural Issues in the May 2011 report entitled, "Reinvesting in Arts Education: Winning America's Future Through Creative Schools." According to this report, a remarkably consistent picture of the value of the arts in a comprehensive K-12 education emerges from a review of two decades of theory and policy recommendations about arts education. Leadership groups typically emphasize outcomes derived from high-quality arts education in one or more of the following categories. One, student achievement typically as represented by reading and mathematics performance on high-stakes tests, including transfer of skills, learning from the arts, to learning in other academics areas. Another outcome, student motivation and engagement, including improved attendance, persistence, focused attention, heightened educational aspirations, and intellectual risk-taking. Number three, development of habits of mind, including problem-solving, critical and creative thinking. And a fourth and final outcome in this report, development of social competencies, including collaboration and teamwork skills, social tolerance, and self-confidence. By focusing on the arts, we believe in the power of art to lift up the lives of Upper Darby students. All literature supports this claim, as does the documented progress of the various charter schools for the arts in Chester, Philadelphia, and the Lehigh Valley, as these schools are all flourishing. The curriculum appendix in the application included the Pennsylvania academic standards for all relevant content areas, including the arts, the standards from the highly acclaimed Kennedy Center for the Performing Arts, and an academic curriculum that was selected after researching various curricula aligned with the Pennsylvania standards and Common Core. It is a qualitative document that offers the beginning of an excellent educational experience for the students. As we have not yet established our staff, we regard the curriculum presented in the charter school application as a starting point in order to reflect our commitment to meeting the state standards. Once the school is approved and opened, we will engage our talented staff in the further development and ongoing enhancement of our curriculum in the areas of the arts as well as the academics. Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, the final member of our team is Tom Taylor. Tom has worked in a considerable number of charter schools throughout the state and is a business manager extraordinaire. I've worked with him in a half dozen schools. Tom, do you want to make a brief statement about the budget?
My name's again Thomas Taylor III. My firm is Repees &amp; Taylor Incorporated, 2901 South 15th Street, Philadelphia, PA 19145. Our firm basically provides business services to charter schools throughout the state. I've been part of charter schools since 1997, working full-time on charter schools since 2005. Over the course of the years, we've prepared many of applications, some that have been approved and some have not. Our job is to work with the founding board to develop a budget that is balanced and tries to incorporate everything that is needed with the five-year plan of a charter school. The budget that you have in your attachment has that five-year plan that's budgeted, that is balanced, and it also has a year zero startup cost. So when you look at this budget, we look at startup cost, meaning there's obviously legal fees, there's advertising, there's business manager fees, there's other fees in there that we incorporated into this budget. And the anticipated revenue from this startup cost would be a loan, a loan that'd be paid back once the charter is approved. The, when we prepare this budget, what we do is, when Dr. Kurtz contacted me, I asked him how many students there are, where the school is going to be placed, the facilities, what administration he needs, teachers, you know, staff, anticipated starting salary, and then we get to work on the budget. This budget's K through 5 the first year, 360 students, 18% special ed rate. It grows each year by 60 students, one grade, through K through 8 by year 4 totaling 540 students, which would be the max of the school. So year 5 would also be 540 students. The tuition rates would basically be based off of the PDE 363 for 2018, 19 that's been published so far, anticipating a 1% increase each year for both regular education and special education. All students are assumed to be coming from the Upper Darby School District. We also calculate the charter school lease reimbursement as it is right now, healthcare reimbursement. We're anticipating the school participating in a national school lunch program. It'll receive Title I funds, 1, 2, 4 as presently being reimbursed, IDEA starting in year 2, and going on from there. And then, as I mentioned before, the food service. We also look at some of the local funding besides the tuition. Local grants, we didn't assume any in this, but student activity, there'd be some fees charged for trips and items like that, but then there'll be costs associated, so it's not a revenue, it's revenue neutral. Basically, expense would equal the revenue generated. We also assume year E-rate in year 2. We'd have to pay for that E-rate application in year 1, but funding, if we're approved, would happen in year 2. And then a modest fundraising of $5,000 per year. With regards to expenses, salary, and benefits, we assumed 45 positions in the first year, increasing to 57 in the third year. All employees are assumed to receive healthcare. Healthcare, we did not do a right-to-know with the district at this time. We basically looked at a school that's similar in size because at the number of students in year 1, we'd be age-banded, meaning each person would be, once they're hired, based on their age, number of dependents, whether they smoke or not, that would dictate what their benefits are. But obviously, the benefits would be very similar, if not match the state, or the district if they could. As we get further along, obviously, we'll have to make sure we're exact, almost exactly the same as the district. The healthcare is expected to increase 15% per year after year 1. Just to give you an idea, single for medical, for healthcare for year 1 is $8,400 per person, family $20,400. We're skewed more to family benefits than we are single. Again, we won't know what we have until applications are received. But, you know, with regards to the percentages, we're assuming roughly 58% of the people would be family, 42 would be single. We're assuming, again, everybody has benefits, no opt-out, meaning people would not decline our benefits. With regards to retirement, this being a new school, the school is going to elect to opt out of the Pennsylvania State Employee Retirement System and go into a 403B. Each year, that 403B would be a 5% employee contribution, 5% employer match. We also look at professional fees. We go down and we look at various fees such as audit fees, legal fees, business service fees, consultant for the administration. We anticipate substitute services, technology services, payroll, special ed services. We don't know what our special ed, we know it's going to be 18% approximately for students. We don't know what needs there are for these students. We anticipate a certain number of positions, teachers, or other services would be outsourced, whether that be psychological, occupational therapy, any types of therapy, speech therapy. Again, as we get our students and we get approved, we'll look to see what services we need and budget accordingly. Professional development, we'll use all our Title II funds for professional development and also, if needed, based on the development plan, professional development plan that the school puts together, we will have to adjust that accordingly. And again, E-rate, we have to pay for E-rate application each year, that is in there. Insurance, we pick up the appropriate insurances, general property and liability, student accident, directors and officers, workman's comp. And basically, we looked at a school, again, similar in size and make sure that we're similar to that. Consumeral supplies, we look at administration, instructional, special ed, and IDA. Our books, our books are heavy in the first two years as we're growing, along with our instructional software and licenses. instructional software and licenses. They actually grow as we increase in students, but we anticipate both. Other overhead costs include anything from marketing, travel and meals, postage, dues, and fees. Our equipment, again, in the first few years, our equipment budget ranges from over a half a million to a half, over a half a million to a half a million in year two, and dropping down in years three, four, and five to approximately $350,000. Site cost, again, when we talked to Dr. Kurtz with regards to the application, we got the square footage of the building, $25,000 in year one, increase into $40,000 in year five, with a cost beginning in a square foot of $12 for $300,000 in the first year, increase into $620 in year five. We also anticipate real estate taxes, as the landlord is not a 501(c)(3). We build in improvements to the building each year. We have janitorial expense, utilities, our telephone, maintenance and repairs, high in the first few years. Equipment rental, that'd be our copiers and anything else that are needed in there. We also anticipate a food service cost. We will use a food service provider, again, if the district offers that, they would look into that also. And then debt service, after year one, it'd be a interest-free loan till year two, pay back in years two through five. And the last thing that we incorporate into the budget is a reserve. This budget is only based on what I know today and what the administration or founding board provides to me. As we go on month to month, just like when your business administration builds their budget, as we learn things, we incorporate that into the budget. What we have here today, most likely would be totally different if we get approved and implemented in 1920, 2019-20, would be totally different. However, this budget today is balanced. The reserve that's built in there is for anything that we possibly miss. Reserve for contingencies in year one would be 1% of total expense and increase to 5% each year after. With all that being said, the first five years of the budget, year one would show a, after, year one would show an annual surplus prior to debt service, $125,000, round it, $413,000 year two, $722,000 year three, $542,000 year four, and $287,000 year five. I'd like to thank you for your time. If anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Is there any additional comment that will be made from the applicants this evening?
I assume at the meeting on the 31st, the announced meeting that was in your letter, that the administration and the district will make its response. That would be my expectation, questions and concerns, is that correct?
You are correct with that. There will be specific questions regarding the various domains of the application for that evening. I anticipate that administrators will be asking those questions. The board will be here as well, observing, we will take, you know, we will put it on the record, and we will also have comment period at that time as well.
And so, just for the record, it means the record will be open until the end of that meeting on the 31st. So additional, we're still gathering a significant number, so I get a lot of signatures coming in, and additional enrollments and so forth. At that time, we will give you an updated packet of all the additional enrollments we have. We have some with us, but we want to work it through the spreadsheet. So we're going to, at that time, we'll ask your permission to submit them before you officially close the record.
And that will be fine, if you have additional documents for us to consider.
We will have them, yes.
With regard to that issue of, it would sound to me, of support.
The enrollment, we're getting letters, we got one today, a letter of support from a dance studio, that's not, the urban dance studio. So we're getting stuff in, but we'd like to present that all in one packet, so it would be organized for you.
Understood, that's mine. At this time, and we, our agenda is a fairly short one in terms of what we have to do, but at this point in the process, we're, I'm going to look to the board, and I'll look to the board president in particular, as to whether there are specific questions or comments, frankly, that the board members would like to make before we open it up for public comment.
Are there any questions or comments from the board at this point?
And to note, that you will have the opportunity to ask questions at the January 31st hearing as well, so we are not, this is not the only opportunity for you under the circumstances.
Mr. Taylor, I'd like to ask you a question about your budget, for the public to know. How much of, how much of your budget depends on the monies that would be coming from the Upper Darby School District? How much have you played into account each child that would be coming from this district, and how much money they would be taking from the school district here in Upper Darby in their backpack when they come to your school?
It would be better if they came with it in the backpack, but I know it doesn't work that way. Bear with me one second.
It would probably just be the total budget, right?
Excuse me?
It would probably just be the total budget, right?
No, it's not the total budget, it would just be the local school district revenue, because you have state revenue and federal revenue in there. But in year one, to give you an example, the regular and special ed revenue would be $4,865,130, over 360 students, be approximately $13,514 per student. Now, typically, based on the 363, the district receives more than that for that student. We only get approximately 80% of the total for that student, 20% staying within the district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So that, just for clarification and for the record, $13,514 would go with each student that came out of the Upper Darby School District to the charter school?
Correct, on a weighted average. So based, depending if they're special ed or regular ed, but on a weighted average, that is correct.
Just to clarify, there's nothing that we can do to change that, and that will not be part of the board's consideration ultimately. The standards are built into the law, and we recognize there are, you know, various concerns about that, but that is, that's a kind of a separate inquiry.
Yes, I understand that. I just wanted the public to hear the dollar amount, thank you.
I will take public comment. Your comments will be limited to three minutes. If you could approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This is for residents of the school district. State your name and.
James Santora, 5228 Apache Lane. Mr. Taylor, the simple answer would have been all of it. Every dollar that goes into your school would have come to the Upper Darby School District if your school were to be open. Each dollar that goes with that child, had they stayed in the Upper Darby School District, would remain in the Upper Darby School District. It was actually offensive to hear that there's not charter options for the students of Upper Darby School District. Every year in this budget, this year alone, over $8 million goes to charters. So please, don't tell us that there's not charter options for our students. It may not be located right next door, but that same dollar amount goes out. So there are options. Number two, we realize we have some issues within our school district, but I'll tell you, the arts is not one of them. They don't just show up at the high school and have all the natural talent in the world. That's cultivated. It's embraced, from kindergarten right on up. In fact, I invite the four of you to come to our gala. Actually, if you give Mr. Dietzler over there, you may recognize his name, he's nationally renowned too, and he's right here in this Upper Darby School District, and he's nationally renowned for the arts. If you give him your name, I'll leave tickets for you at the door, my treat for the gala. Go see it, and you'll see the talent, from kindergarten right through 12th grade. And by the way, you may even see some of our alumni come back, because they embrace the arts at this school. Speaking of charter schools, let's talk about the Delaware Valley Charter School. Dr. Harold Kurtz, CEO, website's still up, but the school closed. I caution you, board, look at some of the resumes that were presented. I wouldn't, and I'll, let me be honest, I would not support this charter school if it was a perfect application. So I'm being honest, I'm a little biased. But, the application that was submitted to you is atrocious. I hope that some of the resumes that were presented was because there was a language barrier, because I don't know people of retardation. That is insensitive, and if it was a language barrier, then that's fine, and it should be corrected, and quickly, and amended, because it's offensive. Back in 2012, Mr. Kurtz made a comment about a charter school in the eastern area where the proposed president.
All right, we are, we're going to have quite a few tonight, boy, three minutes.
I'm just going to finish this statement.
Excuse me, you're making it very personal, and I don't appreciate it.
It is personal.
And you're past your three minutes.
You're coming into this school district as the consultant.
Okay.
This is your reputation.
Mr. Santora, I appreciate your comments, and I know there's a lot of passion, please, we're not cutting in line. We're going to have a calm meeting. Mr. Kurtz, I would appreciate if you don't answer, these are comments to the public for the board for the record.
And I do appreciate it, but I do not appreciate personal texts based on no knowledge of what the truth is.
I understand, so we're going to, everyone here, I'm going to ask everyone here to please, I know everyone is very passionate, one way or the other, about the charter school application, so please, just try to remain calm. We're going to take everyone's comments in three minutes' time. Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Andrew Hayman. I live at 309 Edmunds Avenue in Drexel Hill, but tonight, I am here to read a statement from State Representative-elect Mike Zabel. Dear President Mitchell and the rest of the school board, although I would like to be present for today's hearings on the application of the Upper Darby Charter School for the Arts, unfortunately, legislative business requires me to be in Harrisburg. As you know, I have already sent a letter to the board setting forth my opinion on the matter, and I would be happy to meet with the board at its convenience to further discuss my grave concerns with the proposed charter school. In the meantime, I write now to reiterate my steadfast opposition to this charter school application. In the few short weeks since I was elected, I have heard from many of my constituents who share worries about the egregiously poor quality of the application and unfair financial burden that this charter school would place on Upper Darby taxpayers. Notably, not a single constituent has expressed to me any support for this application. I ask that you listen carefully to the people of Upper Darby tonight and heed their concerns. I know you will. The Upper Darby community and I, as one of the community's elected representatives, urge you to reject this application. Sincerely, Representative-elect Mike Zabel.
Good afternoon, my name is Bonnie Brees-Bentum. Bonnie is B-O-N-N-E-E, B-R-E-E-S-E, and Bentum is B-E-N-T-U-M. I live at 1005 Brook Avenue in Secane, Pennsylvania, a resident of Upper Darby. I come before you today to speak against the acceptance, adoption, and establishment of the charter application being presented to you today. As a public school educator and advocate, I wholeheartedly disagree with the onslaught of charter schools being presented to communities who suffer economically but are rich in their diversity of color and ethnicity. Current research on the expansion of charter schools in this country has shown that public school district spending increases as charter schools proliferate. Researchers further suggest that charter schools gain on students' academic outcomes are quite small, which lend itself to your making the decision to not approve this application. Having read and reviewed the application, this charter school advocates contend that families will have the ability to choose the type of education their children receive as an inherent worth, regardless of any outcome differences, yet this worth has to be measured against empirical evidence which lacks being presented. Considering the 2017 research on charter school expansion in Pennsylvania school districts, which found that hasty development leads to greater total negative financial impact on public school districts, notes all these monies are not held in accountability to anyone according to the Pennsylvania Charter School Code. This is a stark contrast to the high levels of fiscal accountability demanded of public school education systems and districts. Our district has high standards and outcomes for improving pupil learning, especially in the arts. Our families have experienced an increased opportunity for all pupils in the Upper Darby School District, under their care, under their differences in innovation, innovative teaching, AP to basic, to special ed, to ELL methods of teaching and learning, where learners have all left Upper Darby School District, successful in their lives.
That is three minutes. What I would suggest, since I think you have more to read, is that you can submit that to me, and we can place that as an exhibit.
And I emailed it, but my final question is, is it a charter school in your neighborhood?
My name is Bill Kaplan, 241 Highland Avenue in Upper Darby, and I'm a parent of two children in the district, and I ask you to oppose the application here. And just like what Ms. Bonnie was saying, really, the real reason is the fiscal responsibility and the current way that the allocations are handed out and going through the district. I'm actually pretty appalled that anyone who is advocating for charter schools would bring up the arts and education in Upper Darby as a reason for a charter school. If I remember correctly, years ago, when we were facing elimination, one of the points was millions of dollars was taken out of the district, and lack of reimbursement because of the way the laws were written to fund charter schools. For a few students, we were looking at a deficit of millions that would have provided arts education for all the students of Upper Darby. So the application process, and the application that you sent in the curriculum is one thing, but you are participating in a, taking away and a dismantling of public education in Pennsylvania. And if you're not aware of this, I really urge you to look at the history of who wrote the laws for charter schools and how it's been pushed through in Pennsylvania, because it started off as a good thing, I was there in Philadelphia, but currently, it is a way to defund public education. And as someone who's a parent, to hear someone say that you are trying to offer an alternative to public education is, to me, ignorant, and that you don't understand what you're actually asking us to do. So I urge you not to take this application, to stand with public education with real oversight, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak, thank you.
Hi, hi. I'm Patricia Laria, I live at 4027 Marshall Road, Drexel Hill, PA. I have three children in the school district, and I strongly oppose this charter school for the arts, and I'll tell you why. I have twins graduating this year, 2019, and they, I am, they are going to school for art. They started at kindergarten center, went to Garrettford, went to Drexel Hill Middle School, and are now here. All of that was the art education that was provided by Upper Darby School District. They have been accepted at one school in Delaware, and my, they're twins, and they both want to do the same thing, it's kind of funny. But, one of them has applied to very prestigious art schools throughout the country. She went to the National Portfolio Review, and Pratt, Savannah College of Art and Design, Ringling School, which is very prestigious, if you guys don't know, and several others all said she has competitive portfolio, and she was accepted at Savannah College of Art and Design, which is a very competitive arts. And I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that to brag, I mean, I'm saying that because we have arts here. It's here, and you're taking money away. I am a 30-year educator. I am a 30-year educator, and I know as a public educator that charter schools, as the gentleman before said, defund public education. So we do not need another charter school here. A charter school here, we do not need an art school here. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Kira Raffalides, 309 Windermere Avenue, and I have a child at Garrettford Elementary and a child at Drexel Hill Middle School. So I want to talk about two things tonight, one is curriculum and the other is integrity. So first for curriculum, as people have already said, we have a great arts program here in our school, public school district. I have printed out just a summary of the elementary art from Garrettford, talks about drawing, painting, collage, printing, ceramics, sculpture, watercolors, some para paints, pastels, oil pastels, sponge painting, printmaking, weaving, sculpture, ceramics, perspective, figure drawing. I know I'm going real fast, you can get it off the website. And of course, music, we all know what a great music program we have. Let's compare that to the curriculum of the charter school application. If you look at Appendix A curriculum, you'll notice there is a table of contents, and then there is a district fast facts, and it lists things like number of schools, telephone number, number of courses, and then if you scroll down for every school, there's just an outline of some numbers for each school, and that's it. There is literally no curriculum. So that's weird. Then I would like to talk about integrity. So early in the application, it has a little introductory part that's called Areas of Excellence, and it talks about dance, the world of music is ever-growing and evolving, and we're not just talking about sound trends with a consistent introduction. And I'm reading this, I'm thinking, well, this, this sounds a little weird, let me see if I can find this somewhere else. Oh, look, this was directly plagiarized from Pride, that's with a Y, dot B C T R dot Cornell dot E D U, Areas of Practice, Music, The World of Music is Ever-Growing and Evolving, and we're not just talking about sound trends. So I will give that to you. This plagiarism continues, here's a few more examples. Description of the community where the school will be located is plagiarized from Wikipedia, which as a teacher is a double whammy, because you never quote Wikipedia, and now you're plagiarizing it. And then, let's see, Finance and Facility, so that is plagiarized from the Good Earth Charter School application. By the way, that was an application that was not approved in Horsom, I think. So I would love to give this to you, these are just some of the examples of the plagiarism that is rife in here. Obviously, we want our kids to be educated by someone of the highest levels of integrity, and I'm a teacher, if someone gave this to me, it would be an automatic zero. Stern talking to and report to the administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Raffalides. Mr. Fitzgerald, can we enter that as part of the record?
Yes, and if it is made part of the record, what we will do is certainly give the charter applicants an opportunity at the next session to respond to what will be some of the exhibits that would be only appropriate, but yes, we will add that.
Colleen Kennedy, 8723 Westchester Pike in Upper Darby. Sorry that, um, I have a lot more to say than what can be, what can fit in three minutes, but I'm pretty confident that members of this community all have done their research too. I'm sorry, I'm sick, I'm trying my best. I'm sorry, don't yell mono, now everybody's gonna freak out. Sorry, I really thought it was important to be here today. I just want to introduce myself to some of the folks over at the table, some of them know me, some of them don't. I am a 2008 graduate of Upper Darby School District. I am also, I am also considered one of the founders of the Save Upper Darby Arts Movement that happened back in 2012, which has been a topic of discussion during this meeting. I'm really proud of how our community came together to fight for the arts programs, and what has been made clear through our commitment to the, all of these programs, is that we don't need an alternative. What we, what we do need, what has been made abundantly clear over the past six years, is Mr. Duffy needs somebody to buy his building. Frankly, I'm quite tired of his financial woes being pushed on us, and I'm tired of our community being held hostage. I went through the best music program that could have possibly been offered to me in this community. I started out as a special education student, and I ended as a GIEP student. I don't know if some of the people over at the other table know what a GIEP student is, but it means that they considered me gifted. I was able to learn multiple instruments, I was able to perform at the Kimball Center for the Performing Arts, I was able to perform at the Baltimore Ravens Stadium, I was on multiple performing groups that won national and international competitions, and that was 10 years ago, and they've only gotten better ever since. I'm really proud that regardless of party affiliation, everybody who is part of this community fights really, really hard for the school. I'm appalled at the lack of quality of this application. I wonder if this charter school is gonna have a plagiarism policy for their students, because they clearly don't for their board members or their consultants. And I urge the school board and the administration, I'm sure they already have, to Google some of the people that are involved in this, as former Representative Santora and many others have. There's plenty of press coverage from journalists that I've directly worked with, who, these, these folks on this team have a long track record of financial instability and impropriety, failing to have background checks for teachers, failing to even keep public, keep, record-keeping system of transcripts for students. And so, we can talk all day about the financial woes that we have in this school district, but we're talking about kids, and Mr. Kurtz and Mr. Duffy want to have money for this building, and frankly, it's not our problem. I will be sending some comments, as a follow-up question before I go, if I email my comments, is that part of the public record, or only if I bring it today, if I had something printed up today? Could I email something to the board?
To, to the extent that, say, the board president receives information that is material to the, the public support standard, then that is something that can be brought forward at the next hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name's Nancy Riley, I live at 2811 Marshall Road in Drexel Hill, and I am very proud to say I am a retired Upper Darby School District bus driver. I would also like to know if your budget includes busing. I'd like to know why, and if you're accepting children, that we are already busing, and four buses, by the way, to the tune of about 270 children, on four buses every day to charter schools in the city of Philadelphia. Are you accepting them first to your school if you're approved? Which, by the way, I am totally against, I can't afford you. And I don't think there's many people in this room that can afford to have a charter school, and I don't think Upper Darby needs a charter school. Our arts program is fantastic. Thank you.
Stacy Hawley, 1017 Mason Avenue, Drexel Hill. I urge the district of the Board of School Directors to vote no, to allow Upper Darby Charter School of the Arts to use taxpayer dollars to open charter school in Clifton Heights. There are many red flags in the application, but what I find most troubling is the personal relationship between State Representative Margot Davidson, Dr. Collins, Pastor Keith Collins, Representatives Chief of Staff April Rice, and Representative Davidson's campaign donors Jim Duffy and Mr. Harold Kurtz. It is imperative, there is a thorough vetting process in this founding management team. We already know the financial woes of some of the members of that management team. Representative Davidson is taking campaign contributions from Jim Duffy, Mr. Kurtz, and Students First. This application, in my view, is nothing more than a self-serving business transaction. Jim Duffy's offer to withdraw future charter applications if the district buys the Rockborn Falls Business Center sounds like a bribe to me. Perhaps Mr. Duffy's financials should also be examined. Upper Darby School District, I feel, and this is my feeling only, it feel, it doesn't feel right, it feels like a hustle, and people who have no track record of running schools. By the way, and it has been mentioned, that Mr. Kurtz was a consultant with Synergy Educational Consultants that consulted Delaware Valley Charter School, which was mirrored in financial trouble. The marketing of the school is fear-based. Using 2012 Save the Arts and the busing students back into the district is our district's Achilles heel, and you're taking advantage of it. The proposal of the site of the school is not good for the students or the Upper Darby taxpayers. What the students need is for our state representative to focus on making sure all basic funding runs through the Fair Funding Formula, and the district can buy, provide a thorough and efficient education for the students of Upper Darby. We are $16 million short, and it's because of the charter school movement. I hope the board votes no on this proposal.
Thank you, Mrs. Hawley.
Hi, I'm Laura, Councilwoman, Upper Darby, Councilwoman-at-Large Laura Wentz. I live at 7549 Parkview Road. I am actually here as myself as a resident, or as well as for council, but for myself personally, I greatly oppose the application. I am a union person, I find that all charter schools are a union busting tool to get rid of the hard-working, to make sure that the hard-working staff of, of our public school system is not protected by unions. So as a question to you for your charter school, would you allow for unions to take place within your school, as well as, what is your pay rate? You know, do you, will you pay your workers at least a living wage? Would they be paid, would the teachers be paid salaries equivalent to what is paid here in Upper Darby? It's unacceptable, what I've heard so far of your application, the fact that you didn't really know what the arts were. I'm a theatrical lighting designer, there's a lot of things that takes part in performing arts beyond, you know, along with all of the arts, there's the technical side of it. There's no mention of lighting design or set design or anything like that, that's all arts. I personally greatly oppose, I hope you oppose it, please, you know, protect our students and keep charter schools out of Upper Darby, thank you.
My name is Karleen Singh, 17 Marlborough Road, Upper Darby. I believe we've met once or twice before. I'd like to state for the record that I am a school district employee, but I will only be representing myself as a resident. I come to you today as a graduate of the Upper Darby School District. I'm a product of the arts program at all levels of my public education here. The notion that KDA arts education is lacking in the school district is laughable. You noted that this high school is a shining beacon of the arts. That doesn't just happen. It happens because we are pushed at every point in our education to be the best that we can be. The facts are clear, charter schools don't work. Let's keep money in the school district so we can strengthen the strong base that we have already. A year ago, at this high school, we did a little show called West Side Story, and I was given the role of Officer Krupke. Me, the little boy, the little brown boy from Millburn. I never thought that someone of my skin color would ever be able to get on that stage and perform the way that I did. But I did at this school. If that's not opportunity, then I don't know what is. I, for all these reasons and more, for all these reasons and more, I strongly oppose this charter school application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Singh.
Hello, my name is Dr. John Taylor, I'm an Upper Darby resident of three years, I live at 7121 Guilford Road. I'm actually on the board of the charter school, and I'm an actual educator, I'm a charter educator. I'm kinda upset a little bit by hearing some of the disapproval of the charter school, and the reason being, we all should be here to uplift the community as well as expand. It's an option, charter school's an option. Nobody's forcing the charter school on anybody. If you, if you choose not to put your kid there, that's what you choose. But we do have people who are interested. The community I live in is interested. The people that I serve in the community of Philadelphia are interested. Charter school is not just for one big area, but it targets everything. So some of our kids who are lacking can get more. Some of the advantages of special education, like I'm a special educator, I write IEPs every day, I do Section 504 all the time, and I see some discrepancies coming from all kind of counties. And I'm not just speaking about Upper Darby, but all over. A charter school was designed to give people options, options only. It shouldn't be discredited, it shouldn't be tore down, it shouldn't be made, you're coming here, you want to take over, it's all about money. The simple fact is, the school itself is trying to benefit the community, give back, not take away from. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Sweeney, I'm here as a resident, I live at 131 South Fairview Avenue in Upper Darby, and I am 62, I've been a lifetime resident of Upper Darby. I raised six children here with my husband. All of them went to Upper Darby High School. I stayed here when many friends were moving out to Westchester and to other districts because I wanted my kids to go to Upper Darby, for the very reason that they provide excellent resources. And I am extremely opposed to charter schools because we don't need it. We don't need it, we are, I am tax burdened enough, the taxes are already ripping apart the fabric of this community, and every time someone suggests a charter school, the first thing that goes up off in my mind is, taxes are gonna go up, I can't afford it, it's a mortgage to me. I'm trying to retire, it's a mortgage to me. Let me tell you about my kids. My oldest son, Patrick, United States Marine Corps for five years. He was in avionics, he scored extremely high in his ASVAP, he wanted to be a Marine since he was 14. He did so well in the Marine Corps, he came out and he said, "I love working with my hands." I learned how to work with my hands at Upper Darby High School. He's now in the steam fitters. My daughter Caitlin went to the Art Institute of Philadelphia and found out she couldn't make much of a living doing that. She's out in Colorado now doing coding because of the computer skills that she was, were instilled in her here at Upper Darby. My daughter Danielle is living in London, she's a hairstylist. My son Connor is one of the people that would have been a statistic if it wasn't for the teachers here that sat and wrote IEPs with me and went through hell with me in this school district, and if it wasn't for this school district, he wouldn't have graduated. I know that in my heart and soul. I love the teachers here. My son John, guitarist, graduated from here, went on to one of the top three luthier programs in the world. He, he worked side by side with some of the top luthiers, people that came from all over the world, to train at the Gallup School in Michigan. He just completed his first custom guitar. My daughter Julie couldn't decide if she wanted to do the arts or if she wanted to do engineering, but she was able to do both here at Upper Darby.
We are, we are at our three minutes.
Graduated from Drexel. Scholarship, thank you.
Mrs. Sweeney, thank you, thank you.
Kate Smith, 4716 Cedar Lane. I'm a resident taxpayer of Upper Darby School District, I'm also a parent of children enrolled in the Upper Darby School District, and I urge you to vote no to this application because it's deficient. Secondly, it undercuts, it is the opposite of innovative, it undercuts the very program that you are charged with endorsing and supporting and furthering in that our high school program represents the height of all of the programming that spirals up to that level. If we leech off the students and give them an alternative education and then have them come back to the high school, they won't be adequately prepared for all the rich programming that we have here at the high school. The second point I would like to make is that the applications and the applicants here suggested that 18% of the student enrollment will be students who are enrolled as special education students. In Upper Darby School District, we've had a statistics that's similar to that 18% at times, right? But what that doesn't speak to on the charter school application is that that 18% in Upper Darby School District represents children across the continuum of special education, children who are Category 1 in terms of the level of services they need and the dollars associated with those services, all the way up to Category 4, which are the most profound needs that, that we as a community support because that is our obligation here in our community. A charter school typically does not enroll students across the continuum of special education, rather, they take advantage of the least needy academically, socially, emotionally students and get reimbursed at a rate that's equal to the average of our total special education cost per pupil. That has no bearing, of course, on whether you can approve or reject this application, but since it was brought up earlier by the applicants themselves, they sort of glossed over the detail of why that's significant. That's how they will make their money. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Hi, my name is Katie Ford, 512 Alexander Avenue, Drexel, PA. I just have a question, and understandably, it's for the next meeting when you can respond. I have three children in the district, two are currently in high school, one is in the middle school. My oldest is the current drum major, he's in wind ensemble, he's an indoor drum line, he is the Making a Difference student of December. He has been the lead all three years in his middle school plays. Oh, and he has autism. My question for you is, what could you possibly offer me? You have an incredible district here. We all know that there has been issues, but as a mother of a child with special needs and a mother of a child who has flourished and soared in this- and a mother of a child who has flourished and soared in this district, I'm just curious what you think we're lacking. He has had the arts education since kindergarten, and actually since preschool, because he was here at the preschool lab with Mrs. Bernard Nelli. I, I just can't imagine what it is that you think that we're all gonna benefit from, from your school. So I just want you to think about that, and I'd like a response for the next meeting.
Hi, Penny Starr Ashton, five-twelve Wild Avenue in Drexel Hill. I want to speak to the options for special ed students. I strongly oppose the, the vote for a yes for this charter school in Upper Darby. I've always considered my daughter Maddie, who just actually finished with the Upper Darby School District in July of this year, finally, after many, many years here. If my daughter can't attend it or join it, I don't want you to pay for it. And my daughter would not have been approved to go to this charter school. They would not have wanted her. She required speech and PT and OT and specialized services and tutoring and healthcare and profound, profound needs of autism. And if she couldn't go there and go to that school, do not pay for it because other children follow in her footsteps. There are other children here with profound disabilities, and our job as public education is education for everybody. And everyone means everyone. No exclusions. And I urge you not to vote for this charter school because they would not have accepted students like my daughter. And Upper Darby did. You know, I, I understand why they want my child, because my child needs money. When you're talking eighteen percent, you're talking two-point-four million. Eighteen percent special ed public, I, I did the math back there. And on a last note, I can't tell you how appalled I am that I read resumes attached to a charter school application where people are proud of their work with mentally retardation and the juveniles in mentally retardation. I am appalled that no one thought that was discriminatory, ignorant, rude, and disparaging in 2018. I cannot even tell you how profoundly disappointed I am in that that would ever leave anyone's hands and be presented as a public option. Thank you.
My name is Greg Reichard. I live at six, Greg Reichard, I live at six oh six Falls Avenue. I have been a public school teacher for over twenty years, and I am also a graduate of Upper Darby High School, class of nineteen ninety-one. And because of those things, I do believe in public education. As a parent who has now four children in the Upper Darby School District, and also as a graduate, I believe in us. I believe in our community, and most importantly, I believe in our schools. So I urge you to, I urge you to not do this, for lack of a better choice of words. Thank you for your time, and I also just wanted to mention to you that these folks opened by apologizing for being late, but no one has apologized for using the R-word in their application. Thank you.
My name is Maureen Key. I live at eight-seventeen Mason Avenue, Drexel Hill, PA. I just opposed, opposed the whole application. For one thing, I kinda was upset that the meeting was at four-thirty the week before Christmas. I felt like you wanted to just fly it by so nobody would notice. But I think we have other things to worry about in this district. More so, we have teachers that are, we have great teachers in the Upper Darby School District, and maybe we should be taking care of them. They don't even have a contract yet, and I think that we should be backing them up and helping them put more money into our school. I'd rather my tax, my kids didn't go to Upper Darby School District, they went to St. Andrews, but I am all for putting the money back into our schools and taking care of our children here.
Thank you, Mrs. Kate.
Hello, my name's Kate Long. I live at nine-twelve Vermont Road in Drexel Hill, PA. I just wanted it on record that I am opposed to this charter school, in part for two reasons. One, I'm the band president at Upper Darby High School, and I'm concerned about any compromising of our musical program and arts program. Sorry, I'm not gonna cry, I swear, I won't do it. But I am getting very emotional for some reason. And I guess it's just because of anything that compromise the great programs that we offer here. And I cannot be as eloquent as Kate Ford, but I mean, you know, my daughter has an IEP, and my daughter is all music, all the time. If anybody knows her, she's involved in everything. She does do music, five days a week. Yes, she is doing music, five days a week. There's never for a lack of arts in her world. So, you know, that is one of the things that I would just say, that I oppose to it just in part because I would hate anything that would siphon the talent from coming to the high school. And I, I really, again, there's so many wonderful points that people have made. Poor application, it doesn't make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Long.
Before we close the hearing this evening, I think it's important that we note what the process is moving forward. We are aware of the fact that on January thirty-first, there will be a subsequent public hearing, presumably at this location. So we are noted that, and that will be publicly advertised, consistent with policy. In addition, and this is certainly something that I'm, I'm hopeful the applicants are aware of, there is an administrative regulation within the district as relates to review of the charter. In particular, there is a review committee process that will be taking place between now and the January thirty-first hearing. There are a number of individuals, and I'm gonna ask Mr. McGary here to note for the record who those review committee members are. And that is because between now and the thirty-first, the applicants will be hearing from the committee, specific to the various domains upon which the committee is overseeing. And, and that includes interviews and questions that they may have. So, can you note for the record who those individuals are?
Sure. It's back in this one. Back in this one. So our committee will, will begin with Mr. Marshlack and Ms. Christine Kelly from the District Curriculum and Instruction Office. Mr. Marshlack is our interim assistant superintendent. He'll be leading the group with Ms. Christine Kelly, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Dr. Greg Manfree, Secondary Director of Schools. Mr. Frank Salerno, who runs our elementary schools, he's Director of Elementary Schools. Ms. Erin Troy, who's a member of our community. Dr. Sakella Coles, who's a member of our community. Kathy Caney, who's a Supervisor of Social Studies, Foreign Language, and, I'm sorry, Social Studies and our Music and Foreign Language Programs. Mr. Fiddy, Thomas Fiddy, who's in Special Education. Melissa Hardis, who's also in Special Education, Supervisor in the District. Mr. James Nielsen, Supervisor of Special Education. Nina Tyre and Craig Rogers, Ms. Tyre works in our Human Resources Department, and Mr. Craig Rogers works in our Business Department. And then for our HR, Dr. John Council.
I would ask that members of the administration connect with these individuals tonight to make sure that you have proper contact information so as to, to effectuate that process. The administrative regulation requires that the board look to a series of criteria that would be presented before them. That includes the application, the public hearings, written comments of individual reviewers that you've just mentioned, review team summary reports, oral briefings by the review team chairs, and memoranda from technical assistance staff pertaining to aspects of the application. It would be the expectation of the board for the January thirty-first hearing that such reports and input will be provided, and at that time, there will be opportunity for the applicants to, to make comment or respond to any questions that may be brought up in that hearing. With regard to the process for review, the board, subsequent to the next hearing, would have to take action on the application. And not doing the math in my heads, it would roughly be seventy-five days following the date of the first public hearing, which puts us sometime into the February time period. Any adjudication would then be provided in a written response to the applicants subsequent to action by the board at a public hearing. Are there any final questions of either the board or the applicants before we adjourn tonight's first public hearing?
You made it pretty clear, and we'll look forward to our conversations with your, your staff.
Very good. How about from the board?
Could you give clarification on today's start time? So, from...
Just for, for the public's sake, there is a window that requires a hearing to occur within forty-five days of receipt of the application. Whatever you want to say about the law itself, it was not the greatest in terms of timing as the forty-five days comes right before the holidays. So it is not atypical for districts to be holding the hearings right before the Christmas holiday. As for the four-thirty start time, based on availability of, of the board and the fact there's a committee, the whole meeting following this, this was viewed as the, the optimal time under the circumstances. So there wasn't any hiding of the football in terms of why it was scheduled for the time it was.
Should it have been listed on the calendar then? Because of the calendar, it says six... Is that the meeting to follow?
That's, that's the next meeting.
So if I want to know that this meeting is coming up again, how do I...
Well, it was specially advertised in, in, in regular papers of circulation within the community. In terms of the next meeting, absolutely, we'll make sure that the thirty-first is visible on the calendar in terms of the start time, and the start time is...
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty. With that, we are adjourned to tonight's first hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.